The Belvedere Planning Commission. Number one is open forum, which is an opportunity for any citizen to briefly address the Planning Commission on any matter that does not appear on the agenda. Comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Matters that appear to warrant commission consideration may be agendas for further discussion at a later meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak during open forum? Rebecca, is there anyone on Zoom with their hand raised?
I do have someone on Zoom with their hand raised. I'm going to promote them and the person with the 646 area code, I see that your hand was raised. You should be able to talk right now. Do you have something for the open forum portion of the meeting? I can see that you're on mute, so you're going to have to unmute yourself. Why don't we just continue with the meeting and I'll see if I can help this person.
Okay. Moving on, reports, are there any commissioners who would like to provide a report? See none. Does staff have any reports?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? That would be public comment. Okay. We're onto the consent calendar, which consists of items considered to be non-controversial unless any item is, I think I've already said this, removed. The consent calendar will be adopted in one motion. Would any member of the Planning Commission like to? Sorry, I think I've got to double up here.
It's just a minute.
Yeah. So, may I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
I'll make an emotion to adopt the consent calendar.
A second.
Let's vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The consent calendar is adopted. We'll move on to the public hearing. And I'd ask if any commissioners had ex parte contacts, please disclose those contacts on the record when it's your turn to speak on any item. I will now open the public hearing on item two, design review to construct a 325 square foot second story residential addition at 130 San Rafael Avenue. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Seidel, and members of the Planning Commission. For your consideration this evening, is an application for design review to construct an addition to roof decks and to remove four trees. The parcel is 7,800 square feet and contains a 3,520 square foot two-story FEMA compliant residence and attached two-car garage. The site is relatively flat and sits on the western side of Belvedere Lagoon. The site about single-family residence to the east and west, Belvedere Lagoon to the south, and Richardson Bay to the north. The site contains four mature strawberry trees adjacent to the sidewalk on San Rafael Avenue. The project proposes a 325 square foot second story addition above the garage. The addition will be set back 20 feet from the front property line, 10 feet from the left side, and 35 feet from the right side property line. Additional improvements include two roof decks, constructing two roof decks, which will be discussed in detail later in this presentation. A second AC unit on the existing roof. Relocating the front yard fence and gate to the property line. And the removal of four strawberry trees. The addition withstand 20 feet 6 inches above base flood elevation plus one foot of freeboard, which is 24 feet above existing grade for the site. Facing San Rafael Avenue, the addition includes one nine-foot wide by seven-foot 10-inch tall sliding door and one three-foot by six-inch by one-foot 9-inch casement window. Facing Belvedere Lagoon, an existing second story window would be replaced with a new two-foot 6-inch by six-foot 8-inch French door. The project proposes two casement windows on the left side yard facing 120 San Rafael Avenue. And two two-foot 4-inch by four-foot 10-inch casement windows on the right side of the addition facing 140 San Rafael Avenue. The addition's colors and materials would match the existing second story and include asphalt shingle roof and sable wood color, shingle siding and driftwood color, and woodclad window and door trims in a light gray color. The project proposes to replace two existing green roofs with new wood decks, planter boxes, gravel, and glass guardrails. The deck above the garage would be set back 15 feet from the front property line and 6 feet 10 inches from the left side property line. The proposed deck measures 19 feet 5 inches across and 4 feet 11 inches deep and widens to 6 feet 6 inches deep. In total, the deck contains 92 square feet of usable space. The rear-facing roof deck would be set back eight feet from the left side yard and 47 feet from the rear property line. The rear deck measures 12 feet 7 inches deep and 19 feet 11 inches across with 250 square feet of usable space. From existing grade, the deck above the garage would stand 10 feet 5 inches tall and the rear deck 13 feet 10 inches tall. The project proposes to lay gravel on the northern side of both roof decks and is not intended as usable space. The applicant proposes to plant gardenias to three feet tall as a privacy screen from the adjacent neighbor at 120 San Rafael Avenue. Three wall lights are proposed along the perimeter of the guardrail as well. Staff has received one letter from 140 San Rafael Avenue with privacy and light concerns from the proposed second story addition. The owner of 120 San Rafael Avenue met with staff to express privacy concerns regarding the proposed rear yard roof deck. The project as proposed is exempt from CEQA. As designed, staff cannot recommend approval as the plans do not appear in substantial conformance with Belvedere Municipal Code regarding privacy, exterior lighting, and landscaping. With respect to privacy, building placement should be selected to give consideration to the privacy of adjacent buildings. Here, the rear yard roof deck will impact the neighbor's privacy as the 250 square foot deck has a clear line of sight into the neighboring yard. Here, the neighbor at 120 San Rafael Avenue submitted photographs showing the potential impacts from the proposed deck. Exterior lighting should not create glare, hazard, or annoyance and should be shielded and directed downwards. The proposed wall sconces cast light downwards but would not be shielded. And with respect to landscaping, landscaping plans should be compatible with the character of the site, soften or screen structures, and provide privacy. The existing strawberry trees provide a visually pleasing setting for the residents, blend with the surrounding homes, soften in the existing and proposed structures, and provide privacy between neighboring properties. Their proposed removal does not satisfy the design review criteria. To address the privacy criteria, staff recommends that a condition of approval be added to reduce the second story rear deck to 125 square feet and shift the deck south to begin at door 204A on the floor plans. A smaller footprint and relocation would ensure the privacy for the adjacent neighbors. To address the exterior light criteria, staff recommends a condition of approval requiring that the exterior lights are shielded. And to address the landscaping criteria, staff recommends the planning commission include a condition of approval to require that the applicant keep two strawberry trees closest to the proposed deck. In that instance, the two remaining trees would be sufficient to soften or screen the structures and provide privacy. With these recommendations implemented, the project preserves existing site conditions while placing consideration on privacy regarding the addition. The addition is appropriately set back from adjacent residences and provides balance between structures. Finally, the existing green roof is 6 feet 8 inches from the property line, which meets the five-foot side yard setback requirement for first stories. However, if the applicant were to convert the green roof into a deck, the side yard setback requirement for second stories of 10 feet would apply. If the commission is to consider approving the design proposed here tonight, a condition of approval would need to be added that the guardrail is set back a minimum of 10 feet from the side yard property line. Otherwise, the applicant would need to apply for a variance to encroach into the setback and return to a future meeting. Thank you, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, commission.
And one, one, one extra thing here. In terms of a condition of approval, that guardrail runs a whole length of that, the house, the left side. And so we would also recommend that a condition of approval be that that guardrail and the mid portion between the front and the rear, that it's deleted, that there is no guardrail there. You know, it kind of looks like it could potentially be an additional deck space.
There's no requirement for it to be there if it's not closing a tag.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just on that point, Rebecca, where what's then the criteria for whether a guardrail is required or not on that side?
If there's a deck space there.
If it's, if it's a usable area, Don, that people can go, but roofs, you know, that just requires some occasional maintenance, don't require a gate, a guardrail.
So I guess, but there is some separation there between the deck and the side. That's just rooftop.
Correct.
And so that, it seems like then, you know, either that whole stretch there is accessible or not?
I don't think it would be accessible if the guardrails were moved. So you can only have a, a guardrail at the wood decking, at the planks, and then it stops.
Oh, you put it right alongside the deck?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioners, are there other, there must be other questions?
I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead. Why don't we start with you, Don?
So that, do we know, what do we know about the, the, you know, when a 325 square foot addition was approved when it was 2018 or so? Was it the exact same room? It was?
It was the same room and it was the same deck. The deck was not approved. The addition was approved.
Got it. And, and do we call, did, had they, had they, had the applicant come in asking for a living roof? And then in the course of granting the living roof, it was said, well, you can't, you know, that's not usable space out there.
In 2014, when the house was approved, there was a, a green roof was part of that project, and there was a condition that said that you cannot use the green roof as a livable deck space. In 2014.
So I don't want to, I have questions, but they're more for the applicant. And I don't know, is the applicant on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. So.
And who's the architect?
Yeah, I think right now, let's, we're just going to limit it to questions of staff right now, and, and we'll get to the applicant and have a chance to ask her questions a little bit down the line. So other questions for staff?
Thank you. Just a question, the fence, they are proposing to relocate the fence, but there is no design of a new fence. Are they, what would be the design of the new fence?
It will be the existing fence. It'll be pulled forward to the property line.
The same one, or they built similar?
The same fence.
Okay, thank you.
So Sammy, they're proposing to remove all four trees, and these are the only trees on the, on the property?
Above, I'm not sure if they're the only trees, but these are the four that they're proposing to remove. Could check to see others.
So basically, they're proposing to, to remove the four trees and put the fence basically where the trees are now?
Yes.
And on the property line in front of the trees where the trees are now?
Yeah. And so current, currently the property is in compliance with the second story setback?
Yes.
Can I just ask a question about the height of that fence? What is the height of the fence?
36 or 42.
So on some projects, you know, when we have a tree removal, there's been a recommendation from staff to replace trees like on a one-to-one. I just wondered if you could tell us what your thinking is on just the outright elimination of two without any replacement?
Well, I think we were sort of giving you parameters of sort of how to look at these trees. If, you know, my understanding from the applicant is they're really messy trees, and that's why she doesn't want them. She has a vegetable garden in the front. And we were, there's a condition of approval that says the final landscape plan, you know, shall be reviewed by the chair and staff prior to issuing the building permit. So we figured that whatever the commission thought about the trees, including the replacement, would come back in a final landscape plan.
So, and, and this is more from my own edification. I don't know if that replacement strategy is an actual policy or just kind of a rule of thumb, or it, it varies how we apply it?
Yeah, it is sort of a rule of thumb. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, we'd like to, if we're removing a tree, have a tree planted somewhere else on the property. And that's sort of also been our philosophy is that it doesn't have to be in the exact same location.
Okay. So we can talk about that. I also noticed there's a remodel of this water feature at the back of the property. It's expanded and getting taller from my, not totally unscientific, but somewhat unscientific look at it. Looks like it's about six feet high above grade in its extension area. And I didn't know if that falls under, I seem to remember a number of four feet above grade being something that kicks in for these kind of improvements, but I wanted to ask that question.
Yeah, I'm just.
One is in the building envelope, so it can be over four feet.
I see. Okay, thank you. I guess another question I have, I just wanted to get it out in the open. These conditions that you've offered as a possible route for approval, have those been discussed with the applicant prior to this meeting? Do you have any sense whether they're, we would get buy-in and I can ask them to, but I'm just curious what the process was for you to put these forward?
I did talk to the applicant, the homeowner, about the reduction of the rear deck and possibly keeping the trees.
Okay.
I also talked about it with the next door neighbor at 120, and they're also on Zoom too.
Okay, so presumably, we'll hear from the applicant's representative on, you know, when we get to that portion as to whether this represents a viable route for the application.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Sammy, my only other question is, when, when the addition over the garage was, was approved before, was it the same window configuration?
That's a good question. Let me look at that right now.
Continue, we'll look and we can sort of, thanks. Move on and let you know when we find the answer.
Don, I actually have a question for you. Would you mind passing the Kleenex?
Okay.
It's also the same architect from 2018, so she might be able to answer it, but we're, we're pulling up the plans and just bear, it is the same windows. It looks like there's one more panel. If you're looking at that elevation, there were three panels in 2018. Or I don't know if the dimension's still the same and the paneling's different. I could look.
I have one other follow-up question about the glazing. Is it, was there also windows on the side facing 140 in the previous?
So here, this is the approved 2018 elevation facing 140 San Rafael.
If it's the same architect, maybe she can answer it. They, just looking.
Looks the same.
That, that looks like the same number of panels, but they could be a bit wider. I don't know.
Okay, it's similar, if not exactly the same. Okay. If there are no other questions, I'll ask if anyone in public here present would like to speak.
How's that? I'm Kim Garfinkel. This is Jonathan. We live at 140 San Rafael Avenue. First, we wanted to thank everybody for taking the time out of your schedules to come by the house to take a look at and better understand the concerns we have with the project at 130 next door. And as we showed you when you were able to come by, our main concern has to do with our kitchen window and skylight. And as our house is built, our kitchen window and skylight, which you saw when you came and are, is evident in the photos, is really the main source of natural light for our entire kitchen. It was one of the main selling points of the house when we bought it in 2011. That, and of course, the view of the lagoon, which is a really big selling point. But the kitchen was very important to us. That is, we have four children. That's where we spend all of our time. That's where, that's the heart of our family, like it is for, for most people. And so, and so having that whole area be blocked, and instead of looking at light and sky to look at the side of, of a building significantly impacts our experience and the life that we love in our home. And that, that is really the main concern we have. Additionally, there are windows that will be facing our kitchen window in the new build, which we have concerns about for privacy purposes, obviously. And, and I, I think that's, that's the main point. We also wanted to mention, and I think I mentioned to you guys, this is a little bit of a deja vu for us because we were living in our house in 2014 when the new build went up, which by the way, we love new builds. We love it when beautiful things are built in our neighborhood. We think it's better for everyone. And when that first building was proposed, there was a very large structure proposed with a portion of that building that at this blocked our window, and it was not approved by the Planning Commission in part because of it, it blocked our window. And so when this went up and the story poles went up, we're like, oh no, you know, here we go again, because it's, it's sort of the same blockages we had back then. And I will say, we have a very amicable relationship with our neighbors. And in 2018, Sammy reminded me of this, they asked us to write a letter of support for this project. We weren't living here at the time. We were living in San Francisco. And we never saw story poles. I'm not sure if they went up. Presumably they did, but we weren't living here. And we thought it was a great idea for them to get to build more space in their house. And truthfully, we just didn't give it much extra thought. We wanted to support our neighbors. So that's, that's sort of it for us. Anyway, any questions?
I have a question. When I was there, I didn't pay quite attention. The trees that they are proposing to remove, are those, are those going to impact you positively? Basically let more light come because there were a lot of trees in front of your window as well. And I'm wondering if this is a positive thing as far as you are concerned?
I don't, I don't believe so. I don't think those trees are in the line of sight from the kitchen, but we're happy to look at that.
Yeah, I don't know. It's a good question. I don't know. Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions?
I'm looking at the picture that I took from your house.
Yeah.
And I don't think I see the strawberry trees.
Yeah.
Sorry.
There's, there's some tall shrubs along the property line you see there. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Actually, while you're still here, could I ask you one more question?
Of course.
Just in the context of, of looking at this and analyzing the mass and bulk and the relationship between current design and what might be an ideal design, could you help me understand from your perspective, to what degree, like, things like, would a roof reduction make a significant benefit to you? Like, is there some way for me to understand kind of cost benefit of what you feel like would maybe be reasonable? Or if the answer is not sure, that's totally fine, too?
We have to look at, Mr. Portress, it's, it's very unclear right now. I don't, I don't know if there's a structure of a size that would be interesting for the applicant that wouldn't compromise the light issue that we have. So we're happy to be reasonable, but it's hard to judge that in real time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Is there anyone on Zoom, Rebecca?
I see no hands raised on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now close the public hearing and bring this back to the commission for discussion. Oh. Thank you. I'd like to ask the applicant for a presentation. Sorry to skip over that important.
Rebecca, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Hi, I'm Lina. I'm going to share my screen. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. My name's Lina Clark. Okay, great. My name's Lina Clark. I'm the architect representing Kim Lytle this evening. Thanks for giving us a chance to present this and for those who came to the site. I was part of the design team that worked on the house that currently stands at 130 Centerfell back in 2013, 2014. And then I also went through the process in 2018 to do a very similar presentation and proposal. That was not, it was never built, but now Kim is interested in pursuing it again, so here we are. She hired me to continue the same architecture that exists there and conceive of something that is cohesive with the original design and took into account the history of what this property has been through as far as city proposals. So we feel like this is a very reasonable and small addition at 325 square feet. And I just wanted to mention that my understanding of the planning commission is that your role is to protect the light and views and privacy of the velvetera residents. And so I wanted to start off by showing you a view of what they would see out of the addition if it were to be built. And since my job is to advocate for my client, I want to remind you that her views are important as well. Even though they don't exist yet, they're still important. And this leads me to the next topic, which is. There we go. So the tree. So before I get into the architecture, I wanted to talk about the trees. Because when these were originally planted in 2013, 2014, they were much smaller, obviously. And they've grown so large that they're inappropriate for their current setting. They're also making it difficult to see the beautiful landscaping in the front yard. And they create a lot of shadow in the front yard and also block the view of Mount Tam from the front bedroom. So they are impacting the light and the views from Kim's home. So they also drop a lot of berries and they're sticky and they're a slipping hazard and they damage cars. And so my client is eager to get rid of them. And we also wanted to assure everyone that if they were to go, there is a beautiful garden that softens the architecture and the house is literally dripping in flowers and vines. So we're confident that even without the trees, there would be a beautiful street front to enjoy for passersby. You can see her, her beautiful vegetable garden in the front and it's being shaded out by the trees. So she would really like to give them more sun. And she has, definitely has a green fountain, so she'll, it's, you know, something she gets complimented on a lot, people walking by. So again, we're confident that even if the trees were to go, there is plenty of greenery to soften everything. And it would just enhance the curb appeal because you could actually see the house. Right now, as you can see, you can't even see the house at all. I also just took a few snaps of the neighbors' street fronts and just showing that it's not typical that there's this much mature tree in front of the homes, as in Kim's home. And she feels like she's kind of locked into this or being forced to keep trees that were just happened to be planted when this house was built, so it was sold to her. And it's not something that other properties are being required to have. And so she doesn't, you know, she'd really like to just be able to show off her lovely garden. So moving on, I want to pivot to the architectural massing. Again, this is very similar to what was approved back in 2018. It basically brings the house into proportion. So this is the current massing and then this is what we'd like to achieve. I'll come back to the guardrail, but this shows you that as of now, this gable feels too small and the garage mass is, is out of proportion and too large for the facade. So this brings the gable up. It's still soft at the street, how it steps down, but it feels much more balanced. So back in 2013, when I worked on this, when I was part of a firm, it went through a very intense design review because FEMA had just placed into effect requirements for raising the first floor finish floor up to NAVD-10. And that was, so therefore, any two-story project proposed at that time felt really tall in comparison. So this project faced extraordinary scrutiny and it was redesigned. And since then, as you probably know, the maximum height for houses on the lagoon has been increased by four feet. And FEMA has raised the minimum first floor height again to NAVD-11. And this, I have, this diagram's meant to illustrate that how small this house is compared to the new maximum height shown in red. And the proposal does not increase the building height and it fits within the, the massing of the existing building. So I've included here just some imagery from the neighborhood showing how this fits within the character of the neighborhood and the mass of the neighborhood. And some of these just show you other houses that have much more of the bulk of the home at the front in the street, towards the street. This is the proposed addition and then this is the, this also shows you the old trees when they were smaller. And then this is the mature trees. So this is just again, some more examples from the neighborhood showing homes that have more of their mass towards the street. And just in comparison, it's quite modest. So now I'd like to address the neighbors' comments. So here's the diagrams that were sent by the neighbors at 140. And they, this is a view out the window that they had sent. This you can see is the bougainvillea that I showed in the pictures of the garden. And then I think that this sketch is meant to show that the addition would be back here. And I just want to point out that that's not a protected view. And that, you know, catching a glimpse of a structure through the trees is not protected for a reason. It's because, you know, you can't, you can't restrict construction just because someone might see it through the trees or else we'd never be able to build anything. So the other thing I wanted to, to point out is I put together a diagram here showing the, this is a Google Earth view to give you some context. So this is where we propose our addition. This is their skylight in the, in their photo. And then I've also did a study, a sun path study, showing what the sun does in the sky and how it's not possible to block light at that angle. So if you zoom in here, this is Kim's property and this is their property. This is the path that the sun takes throughout the year. And it would not, because the sun shines this direction, it would not be able to ever block light because the sun path just doesn't move there. So the sun never shines from this way, which is what it would take to block sun into their property. Another thing I wanted to point out is that this skylight from their photo is approximately 40 feet from the new windows. So I just don't think it's realistic that there would be any kind of privacy concerns, especially with the tall screening here. Also, they, Kim had, my client had recently provided support to them to install a window here, which is 12 feet from her bedroom window. And it would look straight into her bedroom. This is her bedroom. This is the proposed window. And she did provide formal support to them when reached out to by the planner to add that window if they wanted to. Last, so I also want to talk about the, the rear deck. So it's, I found it helpful to see this aerial view on Google Earth. So this is where we wanted to add the deck. And then we proposed, we, we had already pulled the back, the deck back and added screening planters. So that if you were here, you wouldn't be able to look down on the neighbor because Kim doesn't want to look at the neighbor. They don't want to look at her, you know, everyone wants their privacy. But again, this is a very modest sized home. And so she's just trying to get the most out of her investment. You know, construction, construction is expensive. And so if she could capture this space, it would just be a lot better for her as far as what she's getting for her money. If, instead of making the deck smaller, we were also interested in proposing an alternate solution, which would be maybe a built trellis. Something like this, that's not just plants for screening, but something that provides a barrier. It could be more closed like this or something, an architectural element to screen it so that she could make the most out of her property and the neighbor could have their, could guarantee their privacy. So we'd like to ask that you consider something like this. And then regarding the glass guardrail, I actually had a question for the planners. So when I'm looking at something like this, which is on two edge water, the, from my architectural perspective, this railing feels as if it's part of the first story massing. So here, that was my intention as well, is for that first story massing to be visually complete. Because if we stop the glass here, it's kind of visually, it's, it's jarring. So I wanted to let this line finish itself. That was my intention. So I was just curious if there's any way that this could be considered part of the first story massing? Or exactly what triggers it to become part of the second story massing if there's a height limit or something? So that's my one question for the, for the commission or for the planners. And besides that, that's what I have for you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Are there questions from the commission of the applicant? No, I don't think it goes, it doesn't go to public now, does it? No, just, just us to the applicant.
Thank you. I have a question for you about the green roof. Are you proposing to remove the green roof where you are not using the deck?
Yes.
And replacing the gravel? And if so, why?
So my client has had problems with it leaking and the irrigation system doesn't work. And so it's actually the, it, all the plants died. And like I said, it's a, it's a leak, a leak. She has a leaking problem. So she would really like to get rid of that.
Got it. Thank you. And then I have another question about the, you know, it is interior, but I'm wondering if it has anything to do with the height of the, basically the, the bedroom that you are adding. Where you are adding the bedroom, where you have the sliding door. Within that thickness of the wall, you have two steps going up. Am I reading that correct?
Let me pull up my drawing.
There's a sliding door on this.
So you're talking about the thickness of the wall?
I'm, no, I, I feel like you have a sliding door where you have the steps. Basically, your step is opening or.
I mean, could you bring up the second floor plan, please?
The door is opening and closing on the step, which is not consistent with the overall floor plan of this house, which is very clean and neat. And then this is one of those that, you know, the old houses have and people try to remove them or clean them up and.
Sorry, I'm trying to find the. So you're talking about here?
Yes, yes.
Here?
Oh, no, to entry to the room from the steps, yes.
Yeah, it's just trying to get all the geometry to work and that's why. I mean, anything would be executed in the cleanest way possible.
Why do you need to go up two steps?
Because the inflection, I think it's clearer, inflection. So that level is actually higher. You see that?
Yes.
That's why. So here it is in section.
But you. Oh, the existing roof is there. Got it. Yeah, that's all my questions. Thank you.
So the existing roof assembly of the garage is what's causing the elevation change?
Exactly.
Did you ever try massing other options, other variations that adjusted? Maybe the bathrooms on the opposite side, different configurations of the bedrooms, of the bedroom and the bathroom?
We always do as part of the, yeah, we always do as part of the design process.
Cause I think what stands out is that the, you know, the bedroom is prominent. It does stick out to have such a great view. But I am curious about options that might adjust it so it does potentially have nearly the same volume, but adjusted so that there might be a reduced. The block, the view blocked for 140 to be reduced purely by adjusting the massing. I don't know if that would severely impact 120. If you guys did try that before, was there conversations with 120 about any other massings or anything along those lines?
No, I don't think that that was their concern at 120. It was the deck in the back.
If you did flip those, would that impact windows for 120? And I would understand if that's a difficult question to answer.
Yeah, it's not difficult. So you, the way that the plan is laid out, and it's kind of the only way that this works, to get a bedroom up there is. So because we're doing this shed gable on this side to allow the height to keep dropping, the bathroom and like the hallway can't go through, or the bedroom can't be in this long skinny piece. It doesn't work because you have to get into the kind of the middle of the space. Let me show you here. So in order to, so let's pretend that you wanted to put the bathroom and the closet here. You'd end up with this long skinny area that's unfurnishedable. So the closet and like the support spaces have to be in the shed gable or else the plan doesn't work. Because if you entered here, you'd have to have, yeah, there'd just be, you wouldn't be able to fit a bed.
Is there, could you remind me where the, the setback is the, the, what would be the top setback, the side setback? Is that at the far edge of what is?
Yeah, so the side setbacks here. And the front setback, you could technically could go further forward, I believe. Let me pull up my site plan.
So if you directly flipped it.
Also, so are you trying to solve for these windows into 140?
I'm actually just curious if, if it was tested to see the massing in that other configuration. And if you, if you did flip it, if I did have an objective, which I'm, I'm just curious at this point, it would be to reduce the mass by pulling it further away from 140 so that there was less blockage of the view to their sort of primary living space.
I guess I don't understand how that could be considered a blockage of a view if it's 40 feet away. Just because you can see it from their kitchen?
Uh, I mean, the, it takes up about 60% of the window. So the glazing would be covered by about 60%, whereas it's at roughly zero now besides the trees.
So from their kitchen, when you are looking out, the only, um, part of the sky you can see is going to be blocked by the, um, second floor that is extended. With the story poles, you can see that the sky is going to be not visible, would be just greens, although it's far away.
Yeah, I mean, this, so, yeah, I mean, it's also, we're shooting the existing gable to keep this as minimal of an invasion as we can into the structure. Um, and then extending out the side for those support spaces. So if you were to flip it, um, yeah, there just wouldn't be enough head height for the bedroom. Right now it's, it's kind of a pass through space.
What is the height of the bedroom? On the interior?
Inside?
Yeah.
It's 11.6 at its peak. It's this that's the issue. You need those smaller spaces to be in the smaller ceiling height. And then this is just comes from the existing, yeah, you can see how I, um, tried to keep the, uh, very close to the existing roof line. Um, is for the sake of the massing and Eva construction and all of that. Um.
So I'm drawing one, the far corner of the right side in the bathroom. Does that drop down to, is it eight foot or how, how far does that drop down to?
Here.
Yeah, the, the minimum height of that wall that seems to be driving that.
Um, about six five, six four.
Got it.
So it's just closet, like it's essentially closet and then like cabinetry there because it's not, it doesn't meet the minimum requirement.
Is the bedroom height, um, the seal, uh, roof height the same as the existing house's roof height?
It's, it's smaller, it's shorter than the, um, main gable and then just slightly higher than the, the secondary gable.
Got it. Thanks.
We're not adding any height to the project. Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks.
I understand it would, uh, change from the massing of the main house, but was there every, any massings with a flat roof to align maybe with the garage structure?
Um, no, because it, it, it wouldn't look good. It wouldn't be balanced and it wouldn't soften at the street the way this does.
Thank you. There are questions from the commission. I have a couple, but, um, if you have some, John, why don't you go ahead?
Um, I just wanted to ask, um, the four trees that are being proposed to be removed, are they the only trees on the property?
Um, there's other trees. Let me, um, go back to my slideshow here. So I believe there's a tree here. Um, you know, I'm not, so there's tons of screening along the sides, as you saw, and then I believe there's a tree here. Let me look at the garden for this again.
So what's being?
There's avocado tree, there's an avocado tree, an orange tree and a cherry tree. So there's some here.
So what's being proposed is that the, the fence would be moved to the front, uh, right next to the side, sorry, right next to the sidewalk?
Yeah.
And that it would be.
Yeah.
Right? And it would just be more of the, of the vegetable and flower garden?
Yeah. Or even what's there, just some soft greenery, garden extended. Yeah, you could extend the garden. I mean, what she loves, you, obviously she has a talent for gardening. She could extend the garden. She just hates these trees.
Right. But I mean, I mean, there's not a proposal for, say, a, you know, 10-foot lemon tree or something of, something of that nature to go in, to go into the space.
No, because it blocks the view.
No, no, I, 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 you, you already, you already explained. I just wanted to, wanted to make sure the proposal is for short, you know, flower gardens, vegetable gardens, et cetera. Thank you.
Um, she's open to lemon trees. Um, yeah.
Okay.
But, but short ones, not, these, these are just huge.
So, um, I wanted to ask if you had a chance to review the staff report and the potential, um, types of conditions that they presented to the planning commission? And, and ask if, um, you and your client would be open to, um, any kind of approval that would basically be with those kinds of conditions?
Yeah, I, I looked through the findings, but I, I hadn't seen the, um, specific proposals. Um, but I was surprised to see the deck so small in the back. I, I would hope that there's a compromise there where, um, we could build, um, a screening lattice or something like I mentioned. Um, just so my client can get the most out of her property. Um, and something that's a win-win where everyone's happy. Um, so, and then the other, so keeping two trees, I, again, that my client just would rather not have these trees. Maybe, uh, you know, a lemon tree is a compromise or something, but she's just dying to get rid of these trees.
Well, um, I, and I'm going to make a, a comment and staff, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But, um, I don't believe we have the ability to approve this project as it's presented tonight because it would require a variance and there's no variance application here. So there's, um, to me that poses several different routes. Um, and we can sort of work through this tonight. Um, the, the applicant can go back and rework their plan. If they don't want to apply for a variance, um, they could change their design so that they don't have to obtain a variance. Um, but that would be some reworking of the design. I think another option that's open is we can condition the application, um, to set out some parameters where it wouldn't need a variance and then, you know, that can come back to staff and probably be processed. Um, it's kind of a couple of different routes in my mind. Um, but as I understand it, there's going, there's going to need to be some changes to the design as we go forward.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for that. Um, that's helpful. I was not aware that, um, currently the guardrail was going to cause, um, the need for a variance. And again, I, I just wanted a chance to bring up my architectural concerns. I would be happy to modify it if, um, it was, you know, unapprovable because of the guardrail. I don't, you know, that's, that's changeable.
So you, um, it sounds like you'd be open to a condition of approval that states that?
Yes.
Okay. Sammy?
Yeah, Chair Sidle, uh, the two edge water example earlier shown, that one got a variance for that, uh, guardrail and garage to be in the setback and.
Yeah, I don't, I think that's overkill for this project. So we would be happy to do a, yeah, condition of approval or something to address that.
Okay. Um, are there any other, um, questions from the commission before I bring it back for discussion?
I just wanted to address, in, in addition, in addition to the, uh, the guardrail, there was also in the trees, there was also the issue of the lights. Um, would the applicant be amenable to also changing the lights so that they're?
Absolutely. Yeah, we are not married to those lights. Um, they were just the ones that were previously approved. So I just left them in there, but happy to change them.
Can I ask one more question about the, the section of the, one more sec, one more question about the section? Um, when you were showing the section through the closet, was that the same section that goes through the bathroom? So the, the wall, the, the back wall for the bathroom with the sink, is that also a six-foot wall? The height of that?
Yeah, it's about six foot five. Yeah. So like I said, only the cabinetry and like the closet could be in that space or else it'd be, it wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't work.
I guess that's what I mean is, so that in the bathroom where there isn't cabinetry, where there is a sink and a toilet and the back wall of the shower, is that also, is the height of that wall the same height?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I.
Excuse me. Excuse me, commissioners. It would be best if you were speaking to the mic if possible. Thank you.
Sorry, I was just saying that, um, the neigh, the neighbor, um, who, whose privacy would be impacted by the, by, um, by the rear deck has now arrived, but I think he was not present when the applicant was discussing the, the possible, uh, lattice. And so I was wondering if we wanted her to restate it so that he could, he could hear and possibly react. That was what I was wondering.
Sure. I'm happy to go through that part again. Is that what you'd like?
Sure, that's fine. If that's the commission's desire.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so I had provided this diagram showing, um, the rear deck and the proposed screening planters. Um, and I had just mentioned that, um, Kim's intention is to have privacy for herself and for the neighbor. So, uh, we were, but, uh, she wants to get the most out of, um, this construction project and her property. So if she could add some, you know, occupiable, comfortable area here, um, it, it would be really great for her. So she, we were hoping we could, um, if a privacy planter isn't going to cut it, could we do something that's, um, architectural? Um, grow plants on it so it's softened visually, um, but so that it could provide some real, um, screening and privacy so that, um, they aren't looking at each other from here to here. Um, so it could be placed here and, um, make sure that, uh, they can't see each other.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to offer a comment on that?
Um, Chair Sidle, I think you'll have to reopen the public.
Yeah, I'll reopen the public hearing.
Whatever's easiest.
Yeah, it's open. You can go ahead. Uh, introduce yourself, please.
Hey, Nick Markman, 120. Um, appreciate the out of the box thinking. Just quickly here, I'm not sure what's an actual appro, um, you know, being proposed here, but I thought leaking and irrigation was an issue with the growing roof. So if we're proposing planting even bigger plants, I don't know, just a quick thought.
It's the, the green roof system is the problem. So that's built into the architecture. This would be a planter and it'd be on top of a deck that has drainage. So it wouldn't be, um, part of the waterproofing, which is how the green roof operates today.
Thank you. Um, the second thing I guess would be something maybe, and again, just quick reactions. Um, would, would love to talk with you or Kim about it later, but, um, just the height. Because that would, you know, if you're putting something that's six, potentially taller, as you've identified with your trees out front, that would block a lot of the, the light that comes when you do look at the, the sun studies and whatnot that would come into our yard and, and potentially the solar array on our house. And then the third thing would be privacy, um, is visual, but it's also, uh, audible. Um, and that's a big space. I don't know, 250 feet, um, couches, dining room table. I don't know what it's going to be used for, um, but certainly more than just enjoying the view. Um, so that'd be a third thing that, um, I don't know, maybe we can discuss at a, at a later time. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I believe her intention is maybe a couple lounge chairs. Um, so definitely not, um, a dining table because that's down here.
Right. Um, and understand that applicants trying to maximize value for potential resale and things like that, um, as well.
Okay. Um, yeah, so I would say that, um, as far as your solar array, I don't believe that this could block that. Um, and it could be something that's just tall enough to, um, provide privacy and could even take your input, like block something out up there so that you could see how it feels and, um, make sure everyone's comfortable.
Can I ask a question? During open?
You're asking the architect?
Uh, would, uh, both of them, I guess.
The neighbor.
Uh, the architect primarily, but is there anything that was tried? Or, uh, are there solutions that might be of interest to both parties that involve not a element of height, but an element of, of material change that maybe blend the line between, or blur the line between what's occupiable space and what's, um, roof so that it's not a space and if it was some sort of, uh, river rock or something where people are obviously not going to be like having a party and romping around out there, but it's still technically space you'd be allowed to go.
Yeah, I mean, we already pulled the deck back, um, along this whole side. Um, maybe pulling it slightly away from the edge so that the screening would be even more effective. Like maybe just like a row, like 24 inches or something along here of the river rock or planting. I mean, we don't want to do any more plantings. I think they should be isolated here, but, um, so at least they could get the, the width of it.
Just a, a thought of maybe future conversations?
Do we know how big the deck would be if you just pulled it back to the door, uh, per the planning department's recommendation? In terms of square feet? The proposed door, that is?
Um, you're talking about like to here or?
Yeah, it was. Yeah, essentially what the planning department recommended, um, the window that's being converted to the, to the French doors. I think they recommended pulling the deck and, and the, the fencing back to the edge of the door. It seems like that would still be pretty big.
So what they showed was very small. I, maybe I misunderstood.
I think, yeah, we were saying bring it in both ways. It's just a recommendation. It's certainly open to discussion.
Yeah, my question was, uh, exactly right. Thank you. Was a derivative of what was recommended? If we're just pulling it away from the property line to the door, I'm curious. I'd, I'd imagine that, I think the original dimension was like 12 and a half feet wide. So if that was maintained, but it was pulled over, what, three feet, that'd still be 12 and a half feet by 16 feet. So just under 200 square foot debt, something like that.
I think staff is recommending 125 square foot if that's.
So.
Yeah.
You're talking about pulling like to here?
Yeah, exactly. If you just pulled it back even with the door. Um, it seems like it'd still be, uh, probably one of the larger decks on the lagoon still, but that would, um, I'm just curious.
That's a good compromise.
Well, do we know how big that is? How, what that dimension is?
It's about 125.
It happens to be bigger than that. I think it may just under 200 square feet or something.
Oh, 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 sorry. I thought you were saying.
Yeah, the recommendation's 125. I'm just saying there, there's a lot of numbers between zero and, and where it is, I guess. I'm just curious. Sorry. I'm just curious. Sorry, quick math. I hate putting people on the spot for quick math, but thank you for humoring me.
Just a eyeball calculation from the dimensions I see here. If it were the deck from that red line down, that'd be slightly under 200 feet. So that's a little bigger than, at what, almost double what staff had written in the proposed modification. Okay. I think with that, I.
Thank you.
Any more questions here? Yes, we can ask a staff question.
The lattice that they are proposing, does it, I mean, do they need approval for that? Or as long as they have a planter box there, at any point, they can decide to put a lattice or not?
We don't regulate furniture. So if it's a planter box that you can move and it has some lattice on it, then we wouldn't necessarily regulate it. We would look at it in terms, if it's part of a larger project like this, and look at it in terms of the design review.
So the planter boxes with gardenia that they are proposing also, they could potentially move them?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I should officially close the public hearing. Thank you for your comments. I'd like to bring it back to the commission now. Don, can can you start off the discussion, please?
Yeah, I sure can. So essentially, it seems primarily down to three issues, which is the trees, the views from 140, and then the and then the decks. Regarding the trees, you know, I appreciate the applicant's wish, you know, I I guess I can say I get it. That is, I I love those trees. That's those trees make that particular property from, you know, a street user of the property. They they make that property a little bit different and a little bit more interesting, maybe just because it stands out for being different. I also appreciate that the, there's a lot going on there that's really great with the raised beds in that yard, and I could absolutely see how those trees are blocking out the sun. And so no real quarrel there. I'm not sure how saving the two that are alongside that, the two that would be remaining on the around the garage. You know, it's kind of a jump ball for me. I'm not sure that gets you quote too much privacy per se. It seems like that would be just for the sake of splitting the difference there. I guess I sort of trust the applicant's design sense there. Obviously, they do a great job with their landscaping. So those aren't particularly an issue for me. Regarding regarding the views from from 140, I guess I can say I'm all sympathy there because I absolutely do. I think we all saw that there there is an issue from that kitchen window in 140. There is going to be more to see out that window. That said, I don't see any tools in front of us that allow us to do much about that, except to suggest that more screening, well, there's plenty of screening there. Would doing something different break up the massing a little bit? Some of my colleagues tried to explore that, but I don't necessarily see a real pathway there. So unfortunately, like a lot of the projects we see, I'm not sure there's a lot we can do there around that view. Perhaps unless they, you know, there are some certain conditions we can consider the view if people are going in for a a a variance on the on their ratio or I think on their height as well, I guess. And then it's only if we can, then it's only if it affects what we call a primary view. So I'm not sure it can hit all those thresholds, obviously, on that. And then regarding the decks, and and maybe here's a little bit more interesting. One, just in general, I have no way to evaluate which configuration of the back deck can meet the privacy needs of the neighbor since, you know, I'm 6'4". I pretty much have to get out there and stand there and take a look for myself. People can send me all number of iPhone shots of how they see it, but that doesn't get me particularly any conclusion there. I'll just have to trust others to work on that. I will say on the the front deck, I don't think there's much of a quote privacy issue. Like all decks in Belvedere, it will get used probably 0.0001% of the time. I don't, you know, that they're obviously, we obviously look at these things from allowable use rather than actual use. I would suggest that the amount of time that people are actually out on the back deck, given how much great decking is behind 130 anyway, that that fronts on the lagoon, the amount of time that people spend on on top of that, looking down at this wonderful deck and resisting the urge to somehow go down there and be on the lagoon, that's kind of an open question. But I understand that's, you know, there is some property value there to be had. And obviously, once you start doing work, it it's great to capture as much as you can with that. So I, you know, I don't really have opinion about that back deck. And and since I can't go out there and travel it, I'm inclined to go with what the the staff's recommendation is on that. Although if the the neighbor at 120 is able to come up with something that's between what you guys are recommending and what the applicant's recommending, I'm fine with that, too. I'm just saying I'm in no position to evaluate that.
Thank you. Jenna?
I'm gonna add to your to your three things with the lighting, but I think that one's an easy one as the applicant has agreed that any new lighting would be would be shielded as well and that they're not wedded to the other the other lights. And so I think that, Sammy, you can you can work with the applicant to, I guess, choose lighting that that can that conforms to our to our requirements. So in terms of the the decks and the and the and the railings, I think we do have to discuss a way to have the second story roof deck have conditions so that it so that a variance wouldn't be wouldn't be required. And I understand that's moving the moving the railing in from the in from the edge, both on the front deck and and on the rear deck so that it's no longer within the within the 10, the 10-foot setback on, I'm gonna call it the left side of the of the of the of the building. So I think as a starter, that would have to be a condition. And then there's any other further pullback of the railing and therefore the usable deck from on the on the rear on the rear deck for privacy for the for the for the neighbor. And I I'd be interested in finding out what my what my colleagues who have more of a design background than the project finance lawyer does as to as to size any, you know, any kind of lattice lattice work or other or other or other things. But and then with respect to the to the to the trees in the in the in the front, I love trees. I love trees probably more than the average bear. I understand that those trees are. Sun does not understand I'm in a meeting. You know, I think the front, I think the front garden garden looks lovely. I would rather them keep the trees, but I understand they want to remove the trees and that they have lots of lovely garden there. Do we, I would also like to ask my colleagues, like, do we think splitting the difference in keeping two trees? Especially the tree that is. I am, I thought I had. Especially keeping the tree that's over that's over closer to the garage and that doesn't shield their their gar- their garden.
I might ask a question just to get my recollection right. If they, was there any talk about replacement? It sounds like there was one thought of lemon tree, maybe.
Yeah, yeah. And and having a having a smaller tree that doesn't block their view, but this still provides like a little bit of varied in height and. Because I because I agree, I agree with Don that, I mean.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure how I feel about it yet, but I do think like if I were leaning a direction, replacement feels like the most reasonable approach for the applicant, the neighborhood, the neighbors. But yeah, there, I mean, there are substantial trees, the.
Are you finished, Jenna? Okay, let's keep going with you then.
Sorry, I was going.
It's okay. Go for it. You can start with trees.
I think, yeah, the the trees definitely add to the character of the house and the character of the property. I definitely understand the strawberries are rather difficult to deal with, so I'm fully empathized with that. I think for me, the most interesting thing in the project is the the view. Well, I think there are quite a few considerations around privacy that I think we have yet to solve. And I think that's probably what's going to be the biggest consideration for me overall. The the way I would describe it, I I think when I looked at the plans before I went to see the properties, it didn't seem like anything of real consequence that a kitchen window would be blocked. But I think after visiting the site, visiting the neighbors, really understanding the amount of glazing that is blocked, I definitely felt different after that.
Excuse me, if you don't mind a minor interjection. I do just want to remind the commission that views or preservation of views is not a design review criterion. There's perhaps other ways to attack the issue through privacy and some of the other elements that we focused on, but.
I think it's really more light. I think I think even though we're saying views, I I think we really mean light.
I actually do have one specific question about that. I think Title 195610 is that max height only where no significant view blockage occurs. And so I think there is provisions in Title 19 that actually do qualify for view blockage as a consideration for design review.
That's that's regarding height limits. Is that correct, Commissioner?
It's. Yeah, I think there is a question about what max height might mean. I don't think it it doesn't say anything about over max height. It just says max height.
Yeah, just just for everyone's reference, I think what the commissioner's highlighting is language in 19.56.010. It says that maximum heights shall only be allowed in cases where there is no significant view blockage and when all setback requirements are satisfied. So I think that's really a more of a height issue. The view blockage, Commissioner.
Or is it, I think in my mind, it's the relationship between the height and the view blockage that like in this case where, I guess, if there, if we're considering, I think it's at 24 feet. Max height is 25 feet, I believe. And so.
Yeah, and I staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe the the height of the project is at issue.
And the max height for a second story on the lagoon is measured two ways. It's from grade 29 feet. And the second story can go up to 26 feet from BF E plus one. So I, this is not asking for a maximum height for second story.
Thank you for clarifying.
Anything else you wanted to add, Justin?
I think the only other things is just around the privacy. If we are looking towards approval or if there if there was provisions to be made, I think something to the effect of of, I don't know if it's removal of the grazing glazing on the side facing 140 would be the only thing we haven't talked about that I would be very curious about. This may be a difficult question to answer, but would they be in jeopardy of not having enough glazing in that room if we removed one or two of those windows? The two side windows, yeah. That's all for me.
Okay, thank you.
So starting with the trees, I think the the property has, those four trees create have created a very elegant approach to the house. However, I understand that it creates limitation for the homeowner, the mainly the view. I think it is blocking their view, which is very valuable there. We all love the views in Belvedere. So I think I agree with the staff that the 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 two trees should be allowed to be removed, although I think it would reduce from the house, but it would give them the view that is very desirable there. I would suggest that it will be replaced with new shrubs that has a kind of a uniform look. I think that the present design has a very uniform design that is elegant. And if we introduce lemon trees or things that has nothing to do with the the design of the landscape at the moment, it would not be added value. I think a shrub that might not be even tall, that creates the, let the sun shine on her, you know, vegetable garden or whatever plantish planting she has. And then at the same time, create a boundary or greenery to the San Rafael Avenue where people walk. So it it would basically create the added added value by removing those trees. So that is what I think about the trees. About the railing, I think that 10-foot setback definitely needs to be maintained. So the railing to be moved to the 10-foot setback is important. Then as far as the decks and the privacy of the neighbor, I think if it is possible to basically go with the staff recommendation, at the same time require those plan planter boxes to be attached to the roof. So so they are not movable. They are not furniture pieces. They are attached to the structure. In that case, it would not be open to, you know, changes in the future. I think the removal of the green roof is a negative impact of the architecture and and that property. At the same time, I think it is the owner's, you know, choice to to decide, but I think it would negatively impact the architecture, but I don't think it is for us to decide. I can understand the maintenance and the issues that she might have with that. So the lighting, what staff again recommended, I think that is the the way to go. And the water feature, I don't see any issues with the water feature. Going back to the deck and location of the planters, on the back side, I would go with the staff recommendation on the front. I would also move that forward so it is not beyond the face of the wall. I would, I would basically the back of the planter to be aligned with the back with the wall. Basically, if the thickness of the planter don't project the wall, basically. And between the, I think if they do that, then it is between the 10-foot setback as well, right? No, on that side, I would say go with the staff recommendation, which is pull it forward. But then on the other side, the street side, San Rafael Avenue side. Yes, to be moved also forward. I think that's my. I think that's my thoughts on this.
Thank you.
Chair Seidel, I'm sorry to interrupt. I have the architect online and she is wondering if she can ask a question.
Yes, she can ask a question.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just had a question about the trees. Sorry, I'm trying to make sure.
Do you have the phone?
Yeah. Yeah. All right, I think that'll work better. So I know that that there are certain trees, like heritage trees and so forth, that are protected and can't be removed. I was curious about any laws that protect trees like this that aren't categorized as such.
Staff, can you answer that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Sure. So my question is about, I come into this question a lot about the heritage trees, redwoods, so forth, that have to be protected and they're written up in the harvest report and so forth. Since these type of trees aren't protected, I'm curious what what allows you to be able to have the client keep them if they're not a protected species or size?
So a couple of things, we do require the arborist report. We have an arborist report. The arborist is recommending that they are removed. However, we also have a design review finding that says existing landscaping should remain intact. And so the planning commission is reviewing it under both of those, the arborist report as well as the design review findings.
In addition, aren't they part of the license from the city is because they're right next to the sidewalk?
They're on private property, aren't they? Yeah.
It's normal procedure in Belvedere. If you want to remove a tree, you apply to remove it, right?
Yes, they go through a design review.
It's a design review. So that's the nature of what we're seeing here.
Yes, and it's not necessarily species specific. It's based on the findings and the arborist report.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
All right, well, then let me start with landscape. I think I concur with, I think, the general sense of the commission that and also agree with the staff recommendation that keeping the two trees near the garage would be a major benefit to the property. And I don't think that a lot of view blockage is involved there. I think the property is very nice, and I think the loss of the two strawberry trees is partly compensated for by the lovely garden that the passerby will be able to look into. And actually, just to backtrack for a minute, I did want to say that I met with the neighbors on either side of the property. Everybody was very gracious and there are three lovely houses in a row here. All three of them are very nice. And so we're spending the time here to try to get the right balance between these three properties. So anyway, that's where I stand on the trees and the landscaping. I don't think I'll feel like a lemon tree needs to be added in, although the owner could certainly do it if they were inclined to do it. Let me talk a little bit about the relationship to the Garfinkel's house and the view blockage from the kitchen. As I said, your house is great. I love the kitchen. And the effect of the skylight is very nice. I do find that the proposed addition is at somewhat of a distance, although I think it will have a little bit of a noticeable impact. I don't think because of the location on the property and the room that it's being looked at from, it doesn't really rise to the level of something that we can find as view blockage under our code. So I'm sensitive and appreciate the fact that you're here to express your view. But for me, I don't think I have the tools, as Don said, to recommend a change in the design in that regard. Lighting, I'm on board with staff's recommendation that the lighting needs to be shielded. And then I get to the decks. For sure, we can't have, we are not going to be looking toward any encroachment into the second story with railings. So that'll affect both decks. I think that pulling the deck back to the doorway as staff has recommended is probably a good solution and also limiting the size. I think that will significantly benefit the property to, I'm going to call it, the north. So a smaller deck pulled further away from the property line with appropriate screening. I might, I'll, you know, we'll listen to how we craft these conditions, but I might leave it in the hands of the architect to craft the appropriate solution there, be it a screen or planting. I'd like, I would like the planting, if it's a planting solution with a planter, I would like the planting to be six feet tall so it can't be looked over. I don't know how tall the pot is that was proposed. I mean, if it's an 18-inch pot with a three-foot gardenia, that doesn't really get you there. So I think of the screen element more in terms of height, whatever it is, be it architectural or planting, that it should probably be six feet tall so that it cannot be peered over. So I think we have perhaps a general consensus to move this project forward with the kind of conditions that staff has crafted, although for at least one of those conditions, I have a little bit of verbiage that I'd like to offer. But before I go there, I just want to, I guess, almost do a straw poll with the commission. Do you think I've fairly summarized that we're generally in line with the conditions that staff has offered? And if any of you would like to offer some additional amendments to the language that staff has offered, I'd be interested to hear it from you guys.
I'd like to know how everybody feels about adding new shrubs alongside of the fence where the trees are being removed.
Yeah, I meant to touch on that. Thank you, Azalea. I believe that, so the new fence is at the property line, but I noticed it's not at the sidewalk. So there's a little planting strip in there that's going to have to be considered. But I think there's a landscape plan that's going to have to come back to staff and be reviewed by probably myself at a minimum. Is that the case?
That is the case, and we can work with Chair Jemai, if that's what the commission would like, or not Chair, Commissioner Jemai, if that's what the commission would like.
Or the chair, just if we can have something.
Yeah, it's a good point because there's going to be changes where the trees are and the fences and it needs, and I am going to assume, you know, given the nice landscaping that this applicant already has, they're going to take care of it, but we do want to review it.
Yes, we have that condition in there.
And then the other thing I was wondering if, how everybody feels about attaching the planter boxes to the structure.
To make them fixtures.
Yeah, becoming fixed.
Okay, and maybe I've got some thoughts about the condition regarding the deck, so we could add that into it.
Can I ask a follow-up question, just so that I'm totally clear about the concern, the privacy concerns, just so I fully understand the code and the considerations for what privacy means related to the planning code for the bedroom window to the kitchen window? Is that something that's within the jurisdiction of the planning code to make recommendations? Or around privacy, what are we to consider?
Yeah, sure. This is addressed in our staff report under Code Section 20.04.160. So we did include the relevant criterion in the staff report on page four, towards the bottom. And it is in response to that, does every criterion that staff provided the recommendation regarding the rear deck.
So you can, yes, you can use that same criteria for a window, right? I think, you know, it's important to consider how far that window is from the kitchen window, as Chair Seidel, I think, pointed out. And I believe it's 40 feet. Yeah, 40 feet from the proposed window to the neighbor's kitchen.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I think Chair, if you wish to make a motion, I think that would be fine, or to offer language. I think you had mentioned that you had some alternative or additional verbiage.
I like it.
Shield, do we have a, what do we mean shielded?
I think you use the word covered, which is fine too, whatever is conventional.
But what's the, what's the metric? You don't see the bulb from the street?
The code says it has to be covered and downlit. So the lights would have to conform with the municipal.
Yes, yes, just conform with municipal code.
Yes.
With whatever's proposed being approved by staff.
The two strawberry trees flanking the garage shall be preserved. The other two strawberry trees may be removed.
Right, with the final landscape plan approved by the Chair.
So we have some conditions in the resolution, right? So I think Condition K spells that out. Prior to issuing the building permit, landscape plan shall be submitted for review and approval by the Chair and staff. The applicant who are missing words shall preserve the two existing strawberry trees closest to the roof deck or garage. Does that sound okay?
Oh, it's there, so we don't need another, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And in there is, well, so here's my thought for the deck size. It follows what I think I read in years, reduce the rear second story deck to 125 square feet. Okay, yeah, and shift it south to begin at door 204A, as shown on A 2.22. And then the glass railings shall be moved from the parapets and occur at the edge of the reduced deck. I was trying to get the railings to relate to the deck because there's this kind of thing where the rails don't, the rails are way bigger in the current plans than the actual deck. And then actually, based on what I heard from other commissioners, the planter and/or screen shall be fixed and at least six feet of height.
Are you proposing the railing to be at the 10 feet or where the smaller?
I was proposing the smaller deck, like it went to the edge of the door.
Okay, so if the glass railing goes to the edge of the door, then I don't think we need the planter boxes to be fixed, right? Because they cannot move it anyhow.
Well, yeah, I guess that's true, yeah. So we could perhaps leave that out to make it a little simpler.
Unless they move it and put it behind it.
Okay. Anything you need us to clarify before we make findings?
I just wanted Sammy to have a language. Yeah, I think Sammy thankfully took down the language probably a little bit better than I did. And as part of the final motion, I would suggest the commission also include the finding that the remainder of the design review criteria is satisfied. So we're not just talking about the conditions, but we are also addressing the overall design review factors for the project.
Is that covered by us just saying we're able to make the findings for design review, right? That's basically the motion, I think, that we need to have more.
Can I ask a question about that? Could part of that be a requirement to work with the neighbors around privacy? For if there's any privacy concerns for the windows for 140?
I'm sorry, you want them to have a bit more dialogue? Is that the request, Commissioner?
Yeah, if there is a way to add that on there.
Okay, well, I think then we need to hear from the rest of the commission whether they would want to add that as a condition.
Yeah, if that's the commission's inclination, that may be something that we would accomplish through a continuance and let that dialogue happen between the applicant and the neighbors and then see where that lands us next time around.
I think also, you know, it sounds like it's something that you want the commission to discuss right now, Justin? Is that what you're asking?
I was actually wondering if it could be a condition of approval that there was a requirement for the applicant to meet with the neighbors to let them have the final say whether, you know, the allowance to make.
No, we typically don't give neighbors the veto power on projects. It would open up a can of worms that we don't want.
But if you want to suggest that they take that next step, that's certainly within your authority.
Yeah, I mean, can we ask the question of both the applicant and the neighbor at 120? Would they be willing to have a conversation about what the market would bear in terms of their deck size and privacy? Or would they like us just to make the call tonight? I mean, that's really the question.
About the window?
Well, I think my comment honestly is overall that there's privacy concerns on both sides and we're making lots of adjustments in the context of the commission. Whereas, I mean, I don't know if that is warranted to enable us to have a continuance or whether there is a way for those conversations to happen after a design approval. If there's some way to make the language so that this is looking good enough, but we also want to have the opportunity for not a specific solution in mind, but the need for privacy to be resolved on these two issues. But if that's not possible.
Yeah, I think that would just be difficult. I don't know when we would be able to determine when it's resolved. Yeah, I, I think that would just be difficult. I don't know when we would be able to determine when it's resolved. And obviously, there may be a disagreement between the applicant and the neighbor if it has been resolved or not.
Could we ask the architect maybe if they are open to removing those two windows? Because that room is small and it has plenty of window, and sometimes windows are actually, a lot of windows create issues to furnish the room. It might not be hundred percent positive for the owner as well. Like, do, are they? Hundred percent would like to have those windows, or are they open to, just to know how the architects and the. Owner of the house feels about those two windows, maybe?
Yes, sure, if it would be helpful to the commission, we can certainly ask that question of the architect.
If the architect's still in the line, you can go ahead and ask her.
Yeah, Linnae, you should be able to speak now.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Whoa. Sorry, I'm trying that again.
Yes.
Rebecca, can you hear me?
Yeah, you got, you have to turn your phone off. I think you have two devices going, right? So you can only have one that has volume on it, otherwise you get that feedback. So now if you unmute your Zoom screen. We shouldn't get that feedback.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, when I.
We're getting feedback again, so is your, can you hang up? Are you the six four six phone number? If you are, it'd be great to just. Hang up.
Are you there?
Yes, all good.
We can hear you now, Linnae, so you can go ahead and talk.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I think I fixed the problem, so. The, I, I consider the windows important. To get light and air in, so I would much rather keep them. I, yeah, that's the answer on the windows. I, I wanted to, can I take the opportunity to ask about? If it's possible to replace the two remaining strawberry trees with lemon trees?
A question asked, I'll do a quick survey of, of the commission, thank you.
Thanks.
Can each of you just weigh in on whether you're open to replacing the strawberry trees, so there would be two trees, but not the strawberries that are existing? Yeah, that's fine, from my standpoint.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with them not being strawberry trees. I'm also fine with them not being lemon trees, but it being some other. Type of tree that provides a little bit more visual height and greenery at the, at the, at the street level.
Right, okay, Justin.
Agreed.
Can I ask, so what are the concerns about the strawberry trees there? I know that on the other side, it creates shade where the. Planting is and vegetable garden is. On the other side, there is no planting that the shaded would, would. So what are the, what is the reason they want to replace it with something else on that side? On the garage side?
The reason is because they. They're very messy trees and they require a lot of cleanup and they also cause slipping. People slip and they dribble over her car.
Thank you. So. Sort of synthesizing this. I'm not ready to say that. Two lemons are the replacement. I, I do think we could word the condition that. The two strawberry, that there should be two trees flanking the garage in the position of the existing strawberry trees. And the tree, this, the tree is subject to the landscape plan approval. And will work with the applicant. I, I don't know if. A lemon tree is going to get us there. Maybe an olive tree, I don't know. So. We can, I think we can offer some flexibility, but I think we want to know. What's appropriate at the end of the day.
Yeah, so the tree species would be determined by the Chair and staff. We'll add it to the landscape condition.
Correct.
That sounds great.
All right. I think with. Those conditions that we've talked about, and I think Sammy has been ably documenting them. I'd like. To see if I can get a motion to, for a design review approval, subject to the conditions. It was a little different. I just added in some language that said that the, it would be moved back to the door, which is what staff said. It's the same square footage as staff said, but I asked for the railings. To coincide with the edge of the deck, so that the railings pull in to the usable area. And we are or are not making screening, one of the conditions?
Starting from condition one, all lighting shall be shielded. Condition two, reduce rear second story deck. To one hundred and twenty-five square feet and shift south to begin at door two oh four A, as shown on sheet A two point two two. The glass railing shall be moved from the parapet and moved to the edge of the reduced deck. The planter and or screen shall be six feet in height. We remove the condition of it being fixed. And then three, two trees should flank the garage in the position of the strawberry trees. The species will be determined by Chair and staff at time of the final landscaping plan.
That the applicant shall remove the glass railing along the entirety of the left side of the home to comply with the second story setback requirements.
Yeah, that's.
Glass railing the deck and the planter boxes, yeah, I just want to make sure we got that on the record.
Yeah. That's condition L.
So not, not to rework this one more time, so assuming we're making the deck. You know, shorter that are shallower, where it's not going to go out as far, meaning the screening is going to be fairly short. Are we, does the screening actually do anything except? Because if you go out on the deck, the angle has changed now, does it really address much of the privacy concern? Or is it, are we just sort of saying something?
No, it's, well, it's my impression that it does. I mean, from being in the backyard, I think. It's certainly not going to hurt, but I definitely, I, I think it would help.
Is the screen, are you guys interested in having the planter box on the actual deck, or like it's shown on the plans on the outside of the railing, right? So I'm sure we'll get that question from the. Applicant.
Well, to me, it would make sense to put it on the deck, just for servicing it and. I mean, I think if you go off the deck. You get a little bit into the question of can it be moved or?
But if you're moving the railing to the edge of the door, then there is no room for it to be on the inner side of the deck. It has to go to the other side.
Well, you, you know, you have a point. Yeah.
Yeah, so it, it has to go.
Maybe it has to go, yeah.
Because the, yeah.
I guess that's okay.
Am I allowed to jump in?
You know, I think we're going to have to bring this to a close. We're very close to making a motion. I'll let you do one more comment, if you can keep it brief, please. Are you there?
Sorry, I just.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks for giving me the chance to talk. I'm, I'm just wondering if we do the, the screening, can the duck be any bigger than that? Like a strip along the front that's, that I suggested at the twenty-four inches deep, so that the screening planters extend beyond the deck. And there's literally no way to see the neighbor, because we have a little bit more to have it go all the way the, from the door to the edge of the roof?
Well, I think we're getting into territory where, you know, we don't have the exact design in front of us. I think, you know, just. Thinking about it, you know, if your final landscape plan comes back and you want to extend the planting beyond the, the deck. That's fine.
Okay, I just wanted the opportunity to show an option that I think will work for everybody and not be tied to one twenty-five, is all.
Well. One twenty-five is, I'm talking about the planting extending beyond the deck. One twenty-five is in the condition of approval right now. As it stands.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. We're designing without drawings here, so it takes a little bit of time, but I think. We're ready for a motion to make findings for design review, subject to the conditions. And I don't know if we need to repeat all the conditions, but.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually ask Sammy to read.
Yeah.
The conditions, because I think that he's been a good scrivener. All right. I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution granting design review approval. As conditioned to conduct, to construct a three hundred and twenty-five square foot second story addition. Construct two roof decks as conditioned and to relocate existing front yard fence. And to remove four trees, two of which to be replaced with the following conditions. Sammy, can you please read the conditions? Might not.
With the following conditions, condition one, all lighting shall be shielded. Condition two, to reduce the rear second story deck to one hundred and twenty-five square feet. And shift south to begin at door two oh four A, as shown on sheet A two point two two. The glass railing shall be moved from the parapet and moved to the edge of the reduced deck. The planter and or screen shall be six feet in height. And condition three, two trees shall flank the garage in the position of the strawberry trees. The species will be determined by the Chair and staff.
And the removal of the.
What condition was it? And condition J.
Wait, I think it's L, L, and, and, and condition L. Okay.
And condition L.
Get a second, please.
Second.
Let's vote.
So we have to vote on the whole package?
Yeah, there's just one motion.
I.
I made the motion, so I.
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 Nay. The motion passes. Thank you all. Thank you for attending. I appreciate all your input.
Yeah, just for the record, the final vote is four one. Thank you.
Thank you.
I now adjourn the meeting.